There you go.
Yep.
I had to call the meeting of board supervisors, president of candidate order. Oh, Dr. Pratt?
Would everyone please rise for a note of silence? Thank you, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anybody have a conflict of interest? Okay. We'll move on to recognitions. Ms. Krista Baker?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're proud to recognize Sergeant Kim Green as our employee of the month for July. Sergeant Green has dedicated seven years of exceptional service to Prince Edward County, and her hard work, loyalty, and dedication have not gone unnoticed. She is phenomenal coworker who consistently goes above and beyond, often covering her shift, picking up others, especially after hours, to support the team. Kim is deeply respected and appreciated by the sheriff's office staff, the courtroom personnel, and many others throughout the county. She plays a vital role in ensuring courtroom operations run smoothly and efficiently. From scheduling court appearances for in-state and out-of-state inmates to tackling unexpected issues head-on, Kim handles every challenge with grace, professionalism, and a can-do attitude. Her proactive approach, team spirit, and unwavering dedication make her an invaluable asset to the sheriff's office. Please join us in congratulating Sergeant Kim Green on this well-deserved recognition.
What time are you leaving?
I'm bright and early. Eight-inch PVC pipe come on.
Wow.
Heavy, timbered.
Where's timber?
Outside Harrison. Heavy pipe.
I can lift pipe if you conceal a call space.
I'll free you.
At this time of your public participation, do you have a sign up?
Let's hear it check.
There's already no one signed up.
Ma'am?
Nobody signed up.
Nobody signed up? Anybody on home? So, okay. All right, I'm going to have you to board supervisor comment. Supervisor Emmett?
Thank you all the ones that are here, thank you for being here. Thanks for being here tonight, appreciate you.
Ms. Perry Cooper?
Thanks for braving the heat and being here for our support, we really appreciate you.
Supervisor Gillum?
Glad to see you folks, limited numbers but still important. And I'd like to invite them to keep in mind the folks in Texas that lost family members. Thank you.
Dr. Pratt?
Take a good evening and welcome everybody. And I voiced the sentiments of the previous supervisors.
Did anybody watch it?
Same here, I think everybody's watching on YouTube tonight. I have a good friend who is, has three generations on the female side of the tree that went to Camp Mystic. And it's just the toughest situation imaginable. We certainly thinking about them here tonight and will, I personally will make some donations and I hope others will for any kind of relief for those people.
Supervisor Jones?
I'd like to wish everyone a happy belated Independence Day. Thank you for being here to hold us accountable and giving your time in that way. Thank you.
I'd like to echo everybody's comments. Okay, got some agenda, approval minutes?
I can mostly be approved as presented.
Second.
Okay. Supervisor Go?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Ms. Jones?
Yes.
And Janice says yes. Okay. Community department update, we have Mr. Chip Jones here tonight. Superintendent of Prince Edward County Public Schools.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. As you said, I'm Chip Jones, the superintendent now for Prince Edward County Public Schools, four days into the job. So, Board of Supervisors meeting tonight, school board meeting tonight, tomorrow night. So, fingers crossed all goes well. Just wanted to give you a little bit of update about what's been happening in Prince Edward County Public Schools since July 1. It's been busy, it's been a busy four days. Things are off to a great start. This week, our teams at elementary, middle, and high school are getting into curriculum updates and planning to ensure that we have a strong start to the school year. It's a new year and it's a new chapter, and we're building a team that's ready to move the division forward. We've welcomed several fantastic new team members so far. At the high school, we have Ms. Tibbs as the principal, Ms. Cook as an assistant principal, Ms. Andrea Felder as an assistant principal, Mr. Jason Lee as our CTE principal, and Mr. Eubank as our athletic director. Additionally, Ms. Watkins joined us from Amherst County as, to help with their instructional team. And we're also working hard to expand the opportunities for our students, especially at our CTE center. We're in the process to getting a cosmetology course launched at the beginning of school. We're working with the community college and the Department of Education. We found a room, we're in the process of getting the equipment, recruiting the teacher. So, our goal is that cosmetology will start at Prince Edward High School and the CTE center at the start of school. So, that'll, that'll be a great opportunity for children to learn, to get their license so they can do hair, nails, whatever they need to do. So, and then we're going to look throughout the year to add more courses at the CTE. So, it gives an opportunity for kids to earn a credential, get a job, whether they can stay in the area, they can move out, or they can work while they're pursuing a post-secondary degree. So, fingers crossed all that goes well. We got a lot of little, some little red tape to get through with the Department of Education, but we're going to do it. Starting next week, we'll launch our Meet the Administrators tour. And I apologize if I do not have a meeting in everyone's district. To be honest with you, I ran out of days. And between July 1 and the start of school. But to give you, these events will, and the administrators from each school and each department will be there to give an overview of their school and the expectations for the school year. Monday, starting on Monday, we'll be at the Prospect Volunteer Fire Department at 6:00. Tuesday, we'll be at the Maheron Volunteer Fire Department at 6:00. Wednesday, we'll be at the Seed Innovation Hub, just right across the street, at 6:00. Thursday, we'll be at the Rice Volunteer Fire Department at 6:00. And then next, Tuesday, July 22, we'll be at the Crawley Forum in Hampton Sydney. We did not do the 21st because that is a meet the candidates night, I think at the Moton Museum. And then we're also getting ready to take air. If you haven't seen this, the Reading Eagle Bus will start going out Thursday of this week and next, one day next week. This Thursday, we'll be visiting at 9:00, the Prospect Dollar General. Then they'll go to the Hampton Sydney Dollar General. And then at 1:00, they'll be at Parkview Gardens. The following week, they'll be at the Rice Dollar General, the Green Bay Dollar General, and the Farmville Splash Pad. So, thank goodness for Dollar Generals, they give us a good place to meet and so forth. You know, as I said, I just started. Two hours into the job, I just found, I found myself sitting in a school construction meeting. And what I knew before the construction meeting was it was happening. And then you sit in the meeting and you learn more about logistics, fence, pipes, timelines, different things like that. My question was, when are we going to be finished? And so, but that is going well. And I do want to thank you all and the school board and the community for making that possible. That is a game changer for people when you take a tour and it's just the newness and the excitement. Lots of people ride by to take a look at what's happening at that school. So, I appreciate that.
What kind of answer did you get, by the way?
What kind of what?
What kind of reply did you get to your question?
For?
When's it going to be finished?
2027. That's the reply I got. And at the time, you know, we did some roofing work and they were talking about how there wasn't any leaks. And I was thinking, and it really hadn't rained a lot by then, so I need to go back and revisit that question. I get a tour tomorrow. So, because you know, people love construction, they don't always love change. So, we're in the process of getting ready to open school, teachers are getting ready to come back. And so, I'm a visual person, so I need to see the areas that are going to be ready. So, when I start getting these questions and calls and emails, where can we go? Where can we be? We just need to see that. And the construction team and the superintendent that's in charge of that, I can't say enough about them. I met them that one day, but they're very thorough, they're very committed, and I appreciate that. And then just at, to close, just thank you to you all and the school board for making all this possible. I'm excited about the partnership that we continue to have and as we support to move Prince Edward County Public Schools forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Before you get your seat, you know, how deep I am into instruction. By this time, we would have heard something about preliminary SOL scores. I haven't heard anything about an SOL score.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any preliminary information?
Well, this year, the accreditation and accountability for school systems changed. So, the Department of Education has not released that. So, we are looking at the scores and then there's the three E framework. There's, there's all these, you have the three E framework for a high school where you look at readiness, you look at graduation, you look at tendance, you look at mastery, you look at growth. So, the Department of Education is working on that. So, it will be released in stages with all the final data that will come out in September. So, we're still, kids are still taking tests that may have to be, or summer graduate, and they're getting, where they took an alternate assessment. All that information is still being sent to the Department of Education.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I'll give you an update when I know. As soon as I know, I will let you all know. But you know, it's one of these things, when you go to report on that, I want to make sure that all of our numbers are final so we can get the story of what the numbers are telling us. So.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Welcome to Prince Edward.
Thank you, it's coming home. I'm just, Green Day, all day long.
And now we have Highway Mount, Scott Frederick.
I was in Green Bay this morning.
Yes, you were.
Thank you, Board, for having me, chairman and Board, county administrator. It seems like your constituents have been talking to you about mowing. We finished mowing our primaries, I guess as you're familiar by now, and the first official mowing of the year, we don't mow the full medians, but in November, we mow everything back that's mowable. So, we'll do a full cut in November on the primaries. Our secondary system is somewhere 60% to 70% mowed. So, we, I think we got another week to two weeks of mowing on the secondaries. With all this rain we've been having, we've had a lot of customer service requests come in for ditching. So, we've been doing some ditching throughout the county. And then we actually started up some work on Junction Canal Road, that's our rural rustic. So, we're going to build three rural restics this year. Junction Canal, Quail Crossing, and Rice Creek on the Red Shop end from the, where it intersects with Red Shop down to the bridge. So, we're working on Junction Canal now as we can, and we're hoping to start Quail Crossing right when we finish mowing. And then we'll have all three of them done by the time it gets cold this year. We're doing some gabion basket work behind the firehouse there on 693. We've been cutting limbs back and, and brush throughout the county. We typically do that kind of work in the winter, but the more we can get cut any time of the year, the better. As the limbs are really coming out with all the rain and the sunny days we've been having, the vegetation's growing like crazy. Couple roads that have come up a lot lately, Baker Mountain Road, there's still logging on that road. I feel like we work on it twice a week right now. And we've actually switched over to using a cement-treated stone in the areas that break up. We've put a base in with a cement-treated stone to help fight that breakup. Once they're done logging, we'll, we'll put a good fix on it. We're just kind of at the mercy of, the trucks going through there at the moment. But also Corner Road, we've had a lot of work orders on that. I did talk to the area headquarters today, I was telling you, we have some work planned on that hill where the ditch keeps washing out. But we've actually got permission from the landowner to put some lead-off ditches to get the water off the road as it goes down the hill. So, that should help fix that problem there, Mr. Townsend.
Okay.
We've been machining unpaved roads. And then our bridge crew did a culvert replacement on Millbank Road, and that was closed for a couple of months, but that opened back up this week. So, Millbank's just open again. A great project, the, the crew did a great work, great job down there. And the only other thing I wanted to report on is, on Sunday, we got a call to put a, a lane closure in on 460 westbound. We detoured traffic on the Hidden Lake Road and Sulfur Springs Road. It came in on our system that was police activity. So, I get a little nervous every time that happens. But the sheriff kept law enforcement with all of our, our people to keep them safe. And I, you know, it was a successful event as far as VDOT goes. Traffic was safely detoured, the police could do their thing, got the road back open again. So, I just wanted to thank the sheriff's office for their help there with, with our people. So, if there's any questions, comments, or lists you'd like to share, feel free.
Well, I have one question before Luke comes with his list.
Go right ahead.
How is it determined which road comes first with grass cutting?
We have a, a mowing pattern that we use. If we cut ourselves, which we're actually using a contractor this year, so I don't know how the contractor attacks it. When VDOT cuts the secondary system, we have five mowing tractors in Prince Edward County. And we have a pattern that they follow to work their way through the secondary routes. So, a complaint that comes in almost every time we mow is that we only mow one side of the road, and it seems like we have to come back and get the other side of the road. But we have it set up where the equipment operator can mostly take right turns, which keeps them from having to cross roads and possibly, you know, have problems. So, so they'll, they'll mow till they come to an intersection. If it's a dead end, they'll take a right and they'll go down and they'll loop around and they'll come back out and they'll take a right and keep going. And they, they do it so that they can cross the road as few times as possible to mow the, mow the pad, we call it.
Those roads are really bad, check the deer jumping out, it, it's bad.
Yeah.
So, they need to get them out there.
Yeah, they're, they're mowing right now. So, that, like I said in my report, we're hoping to wrap it up within the, I think we might finish this week if we don't get a bunch of rainouts. But I think, I don't like to report on anything till it's final like Mr. Jones. You know, anything could happen with breakdowns. Supervisor Gillum?
On Singleton, when the boys mowed going south, they hung the end of the culvert and pulled it out.
Okay.
I don't know how much, was this right at the edge or not?
Okay.
You'll see it.
Gotcha.
And when you get over at the south end, the trees have grown back into the road.
Okay. Right there by the fire station? Okay, we cut that back a few years ago, it sounds like it needs to be done again.
Also, and I didn't write the address down, on Fire Forks, every year we have to cut those trees back at the big two-story Stockton Home on the right, at the end of the white picket fence. They're back over there in the road.
Okay.
And I noticed this morning where they mowed eastbound on 460, your first phone exit, they took out two directional signs there.
Okay. Up there on 15?
Turn off for 460 to hit 15 north.
15 north.
That wasn't too bad, was it?
That's not bad at all. Thank you for bringing those to my attention. Anybody else?
Right there where the old rice school is, before you get there, on the left-hand side, the asphalt broke, it's a little water hole that been there for years, and it's getting bigger, the asphalt's falling off.
Okay.
So, it's kind of, kind of need to fix for y'all.
All right.
Then we got High Bridge Road, limbs all over the road, couple potholes in the road. And then we got, um, up on Poorhouse Road, on the right-hand side, about two miles down, there's no shoulder. You can probably open the road, a creek right there.
Okay, is it washed out there?
It's about two, yeah, about two miles down there.
Okay.
All right, then, you come on up here to the road, they're going to the lake.
Indian Springs?
Yeah, going up in there.
Okay.
Need to look at that trees laying, they're not falling, but they, they like this, you know?
Okay.
They're going to fall.
Gotcha.
And, uh...
They pines, do you remember? Are they pine trees?
Yeah, they're pine trees.
Okay, I think I saw those ones. I actually rode Indian Springs after I saw you.
Okay, all right, okay. And then on that Aspen Hill Road, maybe before you get down to the trail, them pines, they're kind of...
Okay.
Little iffy, you know?
Gotcha.
And then you could go on there a little further, but I haven't seen you in a while, you know?
Yeah, it sounds like.
You go on down that Scuffletown Road, then the bridge down, on both sides of the bridge, they look tended to, because you go like this, you know?
Okay.
Or Scuffletown Road.
Gotcha.
The bridge, yeah. And then when you get to Gully Tavern Road, coming back to Rice, same thing there. Trees right beside the road, can't really see.
Okay, on Gully Tavern.
Yeah. And that might be all for this month. But I got some more for next month. I saved, I saved you a few for next month.
Save a couple of them.
It's got the drop-off, entered into the dumpster site on Bristle Road. It's a drop-off right there off the conch, off the road. Probably just need to fill it in.
Okay.
Just to fill it in. Is there any prep work going to be done to Rice Creek between now and the time, like prepping the road?
Yes, sir.
I get a lot of calls from constituents, I'm telling them they, it's scheduled to be tar and gravelled this year?
Yeah, this year, we'll get it before, I think, October, I think it'll be finished, but...
Any type of?
Yeah, they'll, they'll come in and do the ditches first and add base stone. They'll do the ditches and pipes, then put stuff.
When do you think that'll happen?
I'd say it'll start, uh, working on Junction Canal now. Week or two, we're going to start Quail Crossing, and then as soon as they're done Quail Crossing, they'll go to that one. They're just going to work on them in order, kind of.
Is that the order it follows in on the six-year plan?
Yes, sir. So, if we could, we'd work on them all at the same time, but we're basically going to use the same crew to do it.
Thank you just for going out this morning with me on, uh, Corner Road.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate you going out, meant a lot to the constituent.
Yeah, no problem, thank you for your help. I mean, she puts the work orders into us, but I think you, you taking the time to go, I think she's going to help us both out, so thank you. I think, Mr. Amer, you had something too.
Plum Creek.
What was that one?
Plum Creek Road.
Plum Creek?
In between Chinkapin and Harris Creek.
Yes, sir.
Dirt road there, it's all to pieces unless y'all run something within the last couple of weeks.
I don't know if we've been on Plum Creek, that's the one that we put that box culvert in on a couple of years ago.
They would send a grade right there to grade it, it's, it's all pieces.
Okay.
That's, that's the only one we're getting a lot of complaints about right now. Harris Creek, these, of course, you know, it's got two or three places in, for the road.
Gotcha.
One over Lou's Buffalo, Buffalo Church Road. I know it's, I know it's a tough road if y'all keep up, but there's going to be some harder traffic in and out there in the next, oh, in the next six, six or seven days. And it's, it's rough, I came through yesterday.
Okay, Buffalo Creek?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that Lager, Lager going in?
No, they're, they're getting ready to do some work down on the farms down there, and they're going to have some equipment in down there, and it's hard to get up that hill. It's so washboard, if you're having a hard time getting road tractors up back up that hill.
Okay, I know right where you're talking about. That was like the last spot for that ice to get melted on. Okay.
I know that's a Lou's area, but I, that, I have another people going in and out, and they called me about it. So, I said I would, oh, one more, I don't know if it's Togel Road or Old 460, or right in the corner where Togel Road used to dump into Old 460, right past Mary Mathi Baptist Church if you're going eastbound. People are cutting that corner really, really tight, and the lady says she can't hardly get in and out. Wanted to know if they could put up any slow, slows, slowdown signs or anything of the nature.
Okay. We don't get many work orders in that section, but so there's, it's kind of like a 90-degree turn?
It almost is, yes.
Okay, people are flying around that.
They just come around there so, so tight, and then by the time they get straightened out, they actually run up in her driveway quite a bit, just, just check that if you can do it.
I think I know a guy that could help.
Yeah. I'm going to get him to, I'm going to get him to go out there some too.
Okay. All righty, what, is that all?
You didn't forget the railing back up on Douglas Stretch, the wooden bridge in the mall, Volta Court, yesterday?
I think they did. The crews kept the road closed, I think, until the railing was put back up. I think it was late yesterday. I haven't been back through there to see it, I was going to go ride it this morning. I didn't make it through there.
You ran it on both sides.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Stan?
Item 11 on page 79 regarding industrial access funding for Enterprise Lane. On January 15, it should be 2020, not 2000, the CTB, or Commonwealth Transportation Board, passed a funding resolution for the Prince Edward County Business Park to construct, provided $650,000 to construct a new access road. The county experienced a number of delays, including that was during the transition between Mr. Barlett and myself. Project design was finalized in the spring of '22, but we also had the issue when Scott, they built the new VDOT office and that we sold property to them. Part of that included where we needed right-of-way and drainage easements and construction easements. And so, we ended up having to go negotiate with a tribe board to move and shift the road over to the, to the east. Project was finalized in the spring of '22 and put out to bid. The board approved a contract in July of 2022 to J.R. Caskin. Road was constructed and completed in 2023. County staff and our consulting engineer have completed all the closeout documents. We put the final right-of-way deed, we're in the process of putting that to record, which will be VDOT's final hurdle to take it into the state system. As part of VDOT's industrial access program, recipient localities have five years from the date of award to provide eligible capital outlay documentation on the project. This was in large part due to right-of-way issues and again COVID, which slowed down economic development. In our case, we have to document $3.25 million worth of investment in the park. To date, the county has failed to secure the required investment. This requires the county to repay VDOT the grant funds over a five-year period at $130,000 per year up to the $650,000 total. VDOT, in their letter of June 9, has indicated the first payment was due in April. Subsequent payments must be made by January 15th in the years 2026 through 2029. The good news is we can request that VDOT reimburse Prince Edward County for any funds repaid between now and January 2029, if we're able to, uh, attract the required, uh, investment. Uh, county staff have prioritized marketing the site with, uh, the Virginia Economic Development Authority and Verita, which is our new economic development, uh, arm. We've actually had the state out and looked at the, um, expanded, the road and the expanded industrial park. Um, so the trick is on us to make it happen over the next three years. Um, in the meantime, uh, we would pull the required funding from our capital improvement budget line. Uh, you've got the VDOT request letter dated June 9th. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
How close are we to reaching the investment threshold?
We've had no new investment.
Zero.
Zero. We just completed the project the last couple of years, and honestly, we haven't had that many leads from the state. But, um, it really wouldn't, you know, we could, one project could easily make that happen. So that's, that's, it's on us to make that happen and save that money, um, and be able to request that back, so, um, I talked with Chelsea, talked with our regional guy, talked with the state, just try to prioritize, uh, getting something to happen out there, so.
Have we moved to solid waste?
Actually, we need a, a motion.
I make, I make a motion. Second. A second, okay. Supervisor Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
And Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
And Jenkins, yes. Yes, ma'am.
Um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, on page 87 in your board pack, um, attached for the board's approval is the FY26 contract and scope of work with Labella, um, the county's solid waste landfill engineer. Um, the county procurement policy requires contracts in excess of $50,000 be approved by the board. Funds for this contract are included in the solid waste department of the FY26 county budget.
I moved that the board of supervisors approved the contract with Labella in the amount of $224,000 and authorized the county administrator to execute the contract on behalf of the county.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes. Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Gill?
Yes, with a comment. Looking at this contract, they are right pricey on vehicles per day charge. That's outrageous. But, and it's compared to the total, I guess.
Something we definitely need to discuss with them at our next meeting.
I believe we would.
Okay. There you go. Okay. There we go. Here to the finance human resource report.
Good evening to the members of the board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First item up for our discussion is the school FY25 school appropriation. The board of supervisors has received a request from the Prince Edward County School Board to appropriate funds totaling $7,500 to the school operating budget as described below. This request is for state funds as described, and there is no local match for this required. There is no local match required.
Supervisor Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes. Supervisor Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend, yes. And Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Next item is another FY25 school appropriation. We've received a request from the Prince Edward County School Board to appropriate funds totaling to the school's CARES Act budget described below. This request is for two purchase orders as described in the attached letter from the school acting superintendent. There is no local match required for this appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes. Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
And Supervisor Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item is national opioid settlement funds. In June, Prince Edward County received $5,266.86 from the opioid settlement fund trust. These funds are required to be used for opioid remediation. The board is asked to appropriate the funds received as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Supervisor Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
And Supervisor Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
The last item is FY26 appropriation, fire program ATL funds. On June 23rd, 2025, the county received a deposit from the fire program funds or aid to localities for FY25 in the amount of $76,233. Per board policy, it is recommended that these funds be divided among the four volunteer fire departments located in the county outside the town of Farmville. Darlington Heights, Hampden, Sidney, Prospect and Rice. The board is asked to appropriate as follows.
So moved.
Second.
With a comment. They're gonna require each department now to report all of their calls and activities annually, which is a good thing.
Yeah, now, her and Gede is from Lunenburg, right?
Yes, sir.
They're sure from Lunenburg, okay.
The town is theirs from, the town, and the gambling is theirs from.
Okay. Supervisor Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
And yes for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now property committee report, Mr. Stan. Let's turn around a little.
Thank you.
So our, um, properties committee met, uh, this evening, but prior to the board meeting, um, we actually talked about the Verso Park and a few, um, in-house upgrades we're gonna be looking to make into the park. But the big item was, um, discussion about award of a bid for the renovation of the Worsham Convenience Site. So the county has a total of seven convenience sites that serve citizens for solid waste. Disposal dispersed throughout the county and Rice, Green Bay, Worsham, Prospect, Tuggle, which is at the landfill, Darlington Heights and Verso. The current sites, with the exception of Rice, which was renovated in 2022, '23, are primitive with few amenities. The county is looking to upgrade each site to provide a better customer experience. Upgrades would include paving, new fencing, signage, um, concrete paths for compacters and site lighting. Current convenience sites are unpaved, typically have potholes and inadequate screening and lighting. They are uninviting to the public and reflect poorly on the community, uh, and these improvements would serve the entire community. As part of the 2025-2027 Prince Edward County Capital Improvement Plan, the county included the upgrade in the Worsham, Prospect, Tuggle and Verso sites. The Worsham site was approved as the number three project in the plan. In addition to paving and replacement of fencing, the Worsham site needed to accommodate future growth and demand and to allow for grade-separated disposal of large items. As proposed, uh, the improvements include expanded site footprint, new commercial entrance, stormwater management, where we don't currently have any, leachate collection system under the compactor pad, which we currently don't have, an expanded compactor and recycling container space, and space for spares for swapping out, uh, paving, fencing and site landscaping. Uh, funding for the implementation of our county capital improvement projects is included, but we've also pulled funds from some other sources. As proposed, we're gonna use funds from our current special projects fund, uh, $500,000 from the landfill construction fund, which currently has a balance of, I think about $2.9 million. $2.82 million. Um, as you know, we just recently completed the, uh, new still of the landfill, so we've got a few years before hopefully our next major expenditure. We've also, uh, got some money in the CIP and the FY26, and we're hoping to bring over about $300,000 in the FY25 budget. Completion of the project will be the next step towards implementing this critical upgrade of our convenience sites. The county received and opened two bids on July 3rd, uh, one from Hain Brothers, um, base bid amount $1,599.777, and the second from Web Development, Um, the bids were reviewed and evaluated by Timmons, our engineer on the project. Based on the two competitive bids, Timmons feels we have a fair bid that is commensurate with the work involved. They recommended the county proceed with the award of the full base bid to Web Development, but not to accept a bid alternate this time. We did the lighting as a, uh, at alternate. Um, their price was $84,502. We think based on, uh, the project at Rice that we can get that done for a cheaper price, so we're gonna hold that out of the bid. Um, as is typical, we'd ask that a 5% contingency be included for a total project cost of $1,396,528. Um, the recommendation for the properties committee is to, uh, award the contract to Web Development LLC, accept the unit prices and lump sum base bid of $1,330,27, and include the 5% contingency in the project costs for necessary change orders. In the packet is the email from Nick Susie, the engineer for the project and the recommendation, a breakdown of the bid prices, and I would note, uh, the engineer's estimate was $1.23 million, and so the, uh, the bid's about 8% over that at, um, $1,330,27. Um, and then there's a good detail that shows the difference kind of the Rice site and the Worsham site. And we do, it is a bit larger with more asphalt, um, more concrete, uh, in the project. But this is the only site that will have a grade-separated, um, location for large item dump off. So if you pull a pickup truck or a larger truck and you can't lift it up into a bin, you'll be able to push it off here. Um, we'll have concrete retaining walls. So this is, will be a centralized location for people to take those larger items and be able to unload them off their, off the back of their truck. Um, with that, uh, staff is happy to answer any questions. There's a, um, schedule, a proposed schedule in the packet that would, uh, based on award of contract, uh, tonight would allow, hopefully, for the project to be completed by mid-December. Obviously, that's weather-dependent, because one of the last things that'll have to happen is paving. Um, so it really depend on how quickly they can move along with the project and, um, get it taken care of. Would note that we're gonna have a temporary site right in front of this site, um, on, um, the access road there, and so they'll still be able to convenient. Our plan is to have it, at least for bag household trash, for people to be able to drop off and still have, have the ability to take their trash during construction. So happy to answer any questions, Chair.
Um, I have a comment. Um, of course, I'm from the Worsham area. I've gone there for the past two weeks, and I was told today that the first container that you put trash has not worked in two weeks. I mean, it's been a mess up there for the past two weeks. And he said that's gonna be replaced. Is that correct?
We will either have to replace that compactor or switch it out with a renovated compactor, or renovate it. We'll have the time during, the downtime while it's being constructed. So during, during construction, there'll be open-top containers for people to take their trash. That's how, just like we did in Rice. Um, so, um, probably, you'll either have, I can say either a renovated compactor with new, new electric, new wiring, new everything, or we'll end up purchasing one to place there between now and December.
Okay.
Director Pratt, just so you know, the solid waste staff and the general services staff have been working on that compactor and replacing parts, and it'll work for a while, and then it...
Like, he said that.
Yeah, and so, um, and at this point, Randy just reported to the properties committee that, you know, he thinks it may be the motor.
He's replaced the capacitor.
Just need to get through, I think, the end of the month until the site is closed for renovation.
And we've just been using the additional containers that are available.
And, and, um, the solid waste department is, is running more trips to Worsham because of that, to pick up those boxes since the compactor has been out of service.
Thank you.
But if you notice something, just give the, or don't know, or jump a call.
Okay.
We'll be happy to respond.
Thank you.
There we go. Your county investor report.
We need a, hopefully a motion, Mr. Chair.
I moved, moved that the board supervisor awarded lump sum contract for $1.33,02700 to Web Development LLC. Improved unit pricing plus a 5% contingency of $66,501 for any necessary change orders for the reconstruction of the Worsham Convenience Site. I further moved authorize the county administrator to sign the contract with Web Development LLC and authorize any necessary change orders in the amount up to 5% of the project cost.
Second.
I have a question before we go. I see the leachate tank. I see nothing for drainage of the property.
So there's a stormwater management pond. This, this site had designed with stormwater management. It's actually, it's not on that plat, it's on the, a different, uh, plat. There you go. The bottom right corner.
Top, top, top right toward the way we're going.
That's what I want to know.
So we've, we've got stormwater management, and we've got a leachate collection system on the pad itself, so both of them are handled.
Just, just a comment. I had a member of my community that got after me pretty heavily because of our new sign we put at Darlington Heights. He said, "I don't wanna see my tax dollars wasted for something like it. It's a trash receiving area." I can't wait till he sees this million plus. He's coming after me.
He, he didn't care for the sign?
No. He said he didn't wanna see money spent on nothing like it. He said, "You could put a four-by-four salt tree and post a nail to sign it to it. He'd be happy with it." David knows who I'm coming.
I can imagine your response to that one.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I mentioned he doesn't go to the dump too much. He probably hoard, probably hoarder.
He lives right, he lives right next door.
He's still back in the ancient age.
His property is right beside.
Still back in the ancient age. You gotta move forward, man.
Is he sitting at his table?
You already got a motion. You already got a motion. Supervisor Emmett?
I'm a no, miss.
Okay.
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend? Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Jenkins, yes. Supervisor Jones?
No.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor, Dr. Pratt?
Big yes.
Supervisor Gill?
I'm a big no.
Okay.
That's a pile of money.
So we got, okay.
Ooh.
All right. Okay, okay. We're gonna move on to the next one. It's the November board meeting, Deke, standing.
Actually, we've got, you missed me. I got county administrators' report right before that, Mr. Chair.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right. I jumped in.
No, that's okay, that's okay. Um, I'll try to make this quick. Um, a few items. Now, I know y'all have heard me before, but the county, our new website was launched on June 2nd. Uh, site features a cleaner look, greater ease of use, especially with portable devices. If you're using a phone, that information should be a lot cleaner.
Looks great.
Um, so please, if you haven't, review it, but, um, it, it is, um, Karen did a fantastic job of working with our contractor. She put a lot of time into making sure everything's working and together on it. Um, courthouse parking lot, we scheduled a contractor. We're gonna reseal and stripe it again, um, the week of July 21st. This is the more cost-effective way. At some point, we're gonna have to repave the lot, but this will buy us hopefully another four or five years. Um, recycling report, um, we have submitted the county's 2024 recycling report to DEQ. Report shows we recycle 4,559 tons of material of 17.1%. It's also material that we kept out of the landfill. Congratulations to our citizens and our staff for encouraging it. Uh, the state required mandate is 15%, so we... The state required mandate is fifteen percent, so we beat that again. With our new vendor coming in, y'all just issued the contract last meeting, and the ability to co-megal, hopefully that will encourage folks to be able, they can throw their plastic and cardboard and stuff in together. I want to thank Cheryl Stimson for completing that report. VACO achievement awards. County submitted a VACO achievement award application for student symposium at Longwood, the comprehensive plan. Special thanks to Sarah for writing and pulling the application together. Last IDA meet on June twenty seventh, they heard final presentation on the Economic Development Strategic Plan and approved the plan. It's an excellent document that will help provide guidance on marketing the community moving forward. And we've shared a draft with the Berkeley Group during the comp plan process to make sure those two documents were in sync together. We had previously applied for two opioid abatement grants through the CRC with Nottaway County for the Piedmont Health District and the Piedmont Regional Jail, received word that both projects have received funding. The regional jail project will provide matching funds to the jail to allow for drug counseling and treatment inside the facility. And I believe Superintendent, Supervisor Townsend is also, they've actually started this week, right?
Yeah, McShin Foundation started actually today.
Excellent. And the Health Department grant will focus on providing evidence-based treatments for opioid use disorder as well as long-term recovery efforts. In addition to the parking lot, General Services, they've been, completed the inspection of the boiler at the cannery for canning season. They completed flooring in the treasurer's office. If you get a chance, go by and take a look at that. And replaced three concrete sidewalk panels out of the ag building. With that, last thing I would like to report that we did exceed our revenue projections for FY twenty five. And you still got July and August that we'll be able to post some additional revenue back. But it's always good when you meet, meet your budget on revenue. And I know we'll, we'll be under on expenses, so that's good news. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
The meeting date for November?
So our regular November board meeting is Tuesday, the eleventh, which will fall during the annual VACO conference. Historically, the board has changed the date to either the Thursday prior to VACO or the Thursday following VACO. It's either the sixth or the thirteenth. Obviously, with the public hearing schedule, we need to know in advance to be able to accommodate. So at this time, we would ask if you, do you have a preference?
November the sixth.
He says with much com, with much.
I want to know what's happening on the thirteenth, then.
Get it done before we go.
I'll second that, but not as powerfully.
So we want to vote on that? We need a motion to set that date?
I got to suck it, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Gill?
This is for November the sixth.
Correct.
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gill?
Yes.
Yes for me. Mr. Patty Cooper?
Yes.
All right. Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
And Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Oh, come on.
I didn't be here, so it don't matter to me.
How about on the thirteenth?
Now, we have some items on our board pack, Mr. Chair, so it's like the first one, item nineteen, is an event permit for the Five County Fair to be held September twenty three through the twenty seventh.
Make the motion that we, that we pass now.
Second. Second, yes.
Okay. Supervisor Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Yes for me. Supervisor Patty Cooper?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
And Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Okay.
The next, we've got a resolution for the Tobacco Commission's FY twenty six Southern Virginia Program, a twenty thousand dollar marketing grant. Basically, the grant's going to work with businesses in our community to help them market their businesses, to train them on use of social media, advertising, branding, messaging, the use of AI tools, and to help them expand their market reach, increase long-term business resiliency. It's one of the first things, you know, we do a lot to attract new business and bring them in. This is actually trying to work with businesses in the community, helping strengthen, expand their reach. Good news is, let's see, county match is fourteen thousand three eighty seven. We've got the in-kind contribution of about forty nine hundred for partnering organizations, and that would match a twenty thousand dollar grant from the Tobacco Commission. We've already, we've got funds in the budget that can cover a local match.
So moved.
Second.
Supervisor Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
No.
Yes. Okay.
Next, so, and I just got this last week, so I apologize, I got them on the table pack. But I've got a, we got an email last week from Dr. Melville Moore from Crossroads regarding the FY twenty six, twenty seven Community Service Performance Contract Master Agreement. So CSBs across the Commonwealth are being asked now to reach out to each locality and have them basically sign off on the local contract. My twenty five years of being a county administrator, I've not seen this before. For y'all that have been on the board, you've never seen it before. We always do a health department contract each year, as far as what their services are and they provide. It's not mentioned, of course, a specific budget amendment. There is the state code requirement that talks about a ten percent local match, whether that's coming from the localities or a combination of localities and donations or in-kind services. As you know, we've talked, county is not meeting the request of Crossroads. However, I would note that we've increased our budget from sixty to seventy five, and from seventy five to a hundred in the previous several years, which is a pretty significant increase, although I think their request this year was about a hundred and sixty thousand. But the Department of Behavioral Health and Department Services is requesting that Crossroads submit its performance contract for us to approve. If the county fails to act on the agreement, then it will be deemed approved anyway. So it's either, you're either going to approve it or they're going to deem it approved. They've got a form for me to sign that I, that basically certify that we've approved it, declined it, or take no action. I don't know, and Supervisor Jones also serves that board as chair, and I, anything else that I'm missing something?
I don't think so. I would only add that you, you mentioned Prince Edward fulfilling the request. I would note that Prince Edward, compared to the other counties on that board, is contributing almost three times as much as any of the other given counties. So our fair share of what we should be contributing to Crossroads varies, depends on who you're talking to. I think we're paying more than our fair share.
I'm fine with it, as long as we don't obligate us to ten percent.
I don't think it's, it's any more of an obligation than what the state code says of the RA. Already.
Already, yeah. They ain't getting all what you want. Okay, do we have a motion?
Is there a reason to take, to take action on it?
I wouldn't even say.
You know, I, I, again, it's, it's, they're going to approve it anyway, right?
They don't have our signature, though.
If we decline, they're still going to approve it?
Yes. Supervisor Jones still has to sign as the chair. I, I, honestly, I'm sitting here, I'm, their chair is on our board. I feel like we ought to support it, but, you know, I'll leave that up to you guys.
I ain't supporting it.
Six in one, half a dozen on the other.
Yeah, I have, I personally have a real problem of.
Either we have authority or we don't.
Right.
And we don't, according to what I see.
Yeah, if we don't.
Nope.
Any, any possible backlash of not being cooperative by any grant, granting agency or anything like that, you know what I'm saying? If it's going to be the same result, I'd rather have it, have a good veneer than not if it matters for dollars down the road or services, but.
I mean, we, you know, we utilize Crossroads for all our, a lot of our kids that are giving counseling and treatment in our CSA program. So, you know, they get funds from us outside of the normal donation, considerable amount. And Cheryl's back there, she probably might have a ballpark. But it's a considerable amount outside the normal budget.
Right.
Yeah, I was, you're always worried about, you sign off on it, approve it, somebody comes back. What do you mean you're not funding it? Y'all approved the work, contract work.
That's why I am. I, I'm going, I'm going to make a motion that we take no action, but that's just my motion, it can be changed or whatever.
I second that. Okay. Take a vote on that. Mr. Emmett?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Mr. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Jenkins is yes. Supervisor, um, down. Get your ready, Mr. Gill?
Yes.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, at least gives me some direction. Item twenty two, just a couple housekeeping items, reminders. We have the upcoming county official summit, which we can, registration is now open. That's the one day in Richmond. And for those that more comfortable rather than getting down there at eight o'clock in the morning, we can make reservations for the, I believe, the thirteenth of August in the evening. The other item is our annual VACO conference. Obviously, as you know, it's a scramble for rooms every year. But, and we typically, it's the chair and vice chair are up there in the pecking order, and then the next longest tendered and on down the line. The good news is, because I serve on the insurance board, we should be at least guaranteed three rooms on the initial request, plus hopefully we'll be able to get additional others wanting to attend. So just, I think the biggest thing for Karen is let, let her know if you're interested in going so that at least preliminarily, when the call comes out to register, folks, we can get you registered.
I will say that, you know, I, I kind of dreaded it the first year I went, you know. Both times I've been, I've gotten a lot out of it. You know, I've, I learned a lot about really relevant things that are in our county now or about to come to our county. I encourage those who are on the fence to come on.
President Louie speaking, I would like to go because I'm on the education committee, and, you know, I have to be there for both of them, the August and the other. And we usually meet in the first meetings, so.
You want to be down there that evening?
Yes.
Karen?
I think I'm a general, so I, I need, I'll be going. I'm on the, steward, on the committee.
As I said, just like Karen, I will make sure.
General legislation committee.
Yes, the education committee.
I'm happy to stay, stay off campus if need be. I know my way around there, so. If we don't get, if we don't get a room, I can stay somewhere else.
That's all I have to do, Chair.
I told Sarah.
Make a motion to a adjourn.
Second?
No.
Yes.
Supervisor Gill?
Okay.
Dr. Pratt?
Yes.
Supervisor Watson?
Yes.
Supervisor Jones?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Patty Cooper Jones?
Yes.
Supervisor Townsend?
Yes.
Supervisor, yes.
Feels like it sounds awful, man.